Good evening, everyone. We'll get started. Can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Sprague, Mrs. Witkowski, and Mrs. Larson are all excused. I am here. Mrs. Sapursky is here. Dr. Kahn?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
So four out of seven of us are here. We have a forum.
Great. We can lose Dan for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There were no comments in the community comment basket earlier. Has anybody come in late and not filled that out? Anyone for community comment? Okay, then we'll move on then to, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on then to Friends of Franklin. Dr. Mo.
Thank you. So I'm gonna kick us off. We have our friends here from Mathnasium. I'm gonna ask that Jordan and Adam and Jenna come up in just a second. If you have a middle school student, which maybe I see some middle school age students out there, for the second year in a row, Mathnasium partnered with us to do a middle school math night. So if you were able to attend, as was I, it was very impressive. If you know middle schoolers, it's hard to get them super duper engaged after school with math, but Mathnasium successfully did that in partnership with us from penny boats to, I can't think, I was, I'm gonna say the wrong name of the game that I played. I think it was 21 different ways to do when you add up the numbers on the card. Is that right? Is that not the right number? 21?
It's 24.
24, see. I knew that wasn't quite right, but you have to do mental math, so it was very impressive. So Jenna, Adam, and our Mathnasium. Jordan, if you wanna come up? Those mics should be on. You wanna talk?
Right over there. I would just like to take a moment to recognize Jordan from Mathnasium of Franklin, who for the past two years has helped us bring Math Night at Forest Park to life. This event brought over 230 family members and students together to play math games after school voluntarily. And, believe it or not, to talk with parents about homework strategies that they could use with their child without a single mention of, well, that's how we did it when I was a kid. This year and last year marked the first time since our building opened that we had this kind of shared academic family experience, and it feels good to get everyone back involved. We're lucky to have partners like Jordan and Mathnasium to help us create engaging experiences for kids and to talk about numbers that we're showing up for. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, Adam.
Photo ops.
All right. I'm doing that. All right, ready? I'm just gonna take a lunch. Thank you. We will move on to our Health Department presentation. We have Megan Conway here for the Health Department to talk to us about our poster winners. Is it working?
No.
How about now?
Yes.
All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Conway. I am the Coalition Coordinator for Volition Franklin and with the Franklin Health Department.
I was wrong. It's not working.
Is that better? Is it me?
Oh, there you go.
It's fine. It's gonna be blah. Okay. There we go. All right. Megan Conway, Coalition Coordinator for Volition Franklin with the Franklin Health Department, and excited to announce this is our 29th year of the Tobacco Prevention Poster Contest. So every year, Health Department goes into our 7th grade class at Forest Park Middle School, and we give them a health education presentation on vaping and tobacco prevention. And what we do with that is tell the kids to take the information that they learn and tell a story to their peers, to family, friends, community members on the harms of vaping and tobacco use and why students should not engage in substance use, so it's a great prevention message. With that, we have 10 students that, well, we have over 300 submissions, I should start out with. And then with that, those get entered into a community voting, so we have a large process for that, but the posters are all entered anonymously that the kids create into a voting process to community leaders. Then I tally up the winners, and with that, we have 10 student winners from our 7th grade class that all received a foam board copy of their artwork, a certificate, and $100 Visa gift card. And that Visa gift card is generated through licensing fees from tobacco establishments in our city, so those fees are going back to prevention in the community that we're able to give to those 7th grade winners. So with that, I would like to introduce our 10 7th grade student winners for our 29th Tobacco Prevention Poster Contest. I'll have all the kids grab your official foam poster board copy, and if you can just come up, and we'll form a line and kinda go around and show everyone what you've created. Kinda file through. You want to put your first paper out and show the numbers.
Wow, look at the detail in that check mark. Very nice, very nice. Wait, hold on. I both looked at it. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, that's beautiful. Really. You guys, this is, I don't know. This might be the strongest one I've seen today. Right over here. Wow. That one looks good. That one's too better than that one. Oh. I think this might be some of the strongest work I've seen.
It's improv, I'm always impressed every year, so I'm gonna ask everybody to give a round of applause. And the board members, if we could get a photo.
Sure, you should just be behind us.
Sure.
If you don't mind. We want to.
Not at all. Wherever you'd like to be.
Backdrop.
Backdrop, if you try it, yeah. You did a nice job. All right, so let's.
Guys, we're gonna picture you by the backdrop. People over here. So yeah, taller people in the background.
Take any pictures, please.
You can be over more from here. Yeah, good job. All right, you're a little more tall. You can be in the background. You're more than there.
Everybody just quickly, a little bit tighter. Ready? Lots of cameras up here.
Look at your parents.
Follow us on Facebook. We will feature all kids on the internet. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So thank you all for being here. You are welcome to stay for our meeting. Please don't feel that you have to. You will not be offended if you.
This is exciting as it's been. I like it.
You've been here for the exciting part. You're welcome to stay. We will move on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thanks, guys.
I'll move to the second president. Senator Jenna? Senator. Second. The motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will discuss our school board calendar. We have a retirement dinner tomorrow night over at Lux School. We have a Board Policy Committee meeting on June 16th, a regular education, Board of Education meeting on June 18th, and high school graduation on June 21st. District Administrator update, Dr. Donovan.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening. So a couple highlights this evening. While we are here at 7 o'clock, there's gonna be National Honor Society induction taking place at the high school, so many of us may be chasing over there as this meeting ends. And that kind of culminates a very busy month of the end of April into May with 15 concerts, a couple remaining yet at the Sabre Center, induction this evening, senior scholarship next week, and then a plethora of sporting events going on outside of that. So it's been a very busy district month, and we're trying to get into conference meets and things like that despite the rain, so it's been a lot of rescheduling. So shout out to Cordell and Principal Bolo and their work on that also. This week, we also opened the Family Engagement Survey that went out to all families via text message per child, so that we're really getting feedback on what that experience is through the perspective of working with their child and their teachers and their school this year. We take that feedback and we bring it back together to our teams this year, especially during the Leadership Summit that we'll have in August, and the schools will work with their engagement groups to come up with new goals around family engagement. So a part of the work of how that's grown, it also keys directly to our coherence metrics, which Dr. Mo will be bringing to the board in July. A couple upcoming dates. We have the Spring Orchestra Concert is also tomorrow evening. Next Wednesday, we, as I mentioned, the Honors Night. Next Thursday is the High School and Middle School Spring Jazz Concert, so that rounds out the end of concert series for the district. Also, another exciting piece we have is June rolls in as the elementary grad walks. So I won't read all the dates, but mostly June 6th and June 9th, our seniors will go back and visit their home elementary school, a dual walk-through. I think it's really neat celebration for the youngest learners to celebrate our graduates, but it's always really neat to see our youngest learners looking at, hey, I get to be a Sabre someday, and I'm going to get back, get to come back and do this. So it's a really neat event. If you can stop by your liaison schools or any of them at any time, it's a nice thing. And Friday, June 13th, the Ed Foundation holds one of their biggest fundraisers of the year, TF for Education. They are sold out for both teams, which is outstanding, but the online auction is always going on also, an opportunity to donate. And as Ms. Sapursky mentioned, we have high school graduation at 4:00 PM Saturday, June 21st, and American Family Field. So you will not be bored. There are plenty of things to do in district if you're looking for something to engage in. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We will move on then to board liaison reports. Any liaison reports?
Nothing to report.
I don't know.
I did attend the SWSA meeting, but we'll talk about that briefly later, so. School and community engagement reports. I went to the, one thing, which was at the Sabre Center, the middle school choir concert. And to be honest, I had never been to a choir concert, and it was great. I loved it. None of my kids were in choir. I really didn't go, and I really missed out, because it was fabulous. I loved it. So it was, yeah, that's what I did. Yeah, I also, I was at a band concert, go over here, but I was very excited to see our students and how they are succeeding. I'm just gonna plug in for the jazz concert. It's gonna be.
Jazzy?
Yeah. Let's stick with jazzy.
Okay, reports, presentations, and other school board business. 2025-26 preliminary budget, Mr. Crummy.
So you were able to see the packet and the breakdown of all of the particular components that make up the budget, so at this point in time, there's lots of assumptions, right? One is we have no idea what the state budget will be. We are figuring in 2.5% CPI for all staff, 3.45% professional staff. We know we talked about health and a myriad of list of items. Altogether, we're currently sitting about $330,000 in the red. That's as of around the beginning of May when the pack was put together. I reran numbers today, so we could see where we are if we took a look at 521 specifically. And we're currently at, in the red, $166,000, so we've essentially cut that in half. That's due to some staffing changes that have already happened, some things coming out of Fund 27 and the way they're going to manage some of the IEPs a little bit differently, given some additional work they've had over the course of time and projecting those. So fairly confident we're going to get to at minimum zero, simply by being conservative at this point in time in terms of benefits. And I think mentioned in the report, at this point in time, we always budget new staff at family health, family dental. Pretty sure most of those don't take it. Last year, it's about 60%. We just don't know which are the 60%, so we just budget it for everybody at this point. So fairly confident we're gonna get to zero, at the minimum zero, if not be in the black at some point in the not-too-distant future. So I'm happy to field any questions you may have.
I'm relatively confident, too. Sorry, the conversation's at the state level that some things are gonna come through in my new budget, but we haven't, as Andy said, put any assumptions in for that at this point in time.
Just a general question. If, you know, if we end up having surplus in the budget, and then same question for if the budget deficit isn't able to be resolved, where would you adjust to make up those numbers or spend that money?
Yeah, so we will take a look at, if we're in the deficit piece at first, and given it's $166,000, we're gonna really go back, and I gave kudos to our departments, I think at our last board meeting, and how really well they did. We're gonna go back and find it from there. We're not gonna take it from staff. We're not gonna take it from buildings. So we'll find it in that particular area. Or potentially using 100, if we just used today's number, $166,000 in Fund 46 to help cover CPI for what, or CIP projects for one year. If we have a surplus, it's really gonna depend on what it is. I would be ecstatic if it was like $2 million and we figure out what it is, but ultimately, I think if we have a surplus, we'd be looking to help really bridge that gap in our professional staff, who are not gonna get, who are not meeting a CPI raise, because again, we have media and we have master's degrees, we have years of service, those kind of bumps take away from that. So I think that's probably one of the first areas we take a look at. I would caution us, though, and say if we have a surplus, we'll use $2 million if they were like grand deals, and plugging that all into salaries, because we'll know the next year. And then we're gonna be sitting in an area where the state's gonna be at odds again two years from now. So while I think a portion of that could help bridge that, I'd be cautious about spending the whole thing and wanting to make sure that we have some plans to be able to step into it over a period of years, so that next year, we're not looking at a deficit at this point, because we will know what the state is, right? We'll want, try to start forecasting that out a little bit further to make sure we can cover that particular piece. But that'd probably be the first area to think about yet. And then CIP projects are always a great thing. Can we knock off some of those bigger chunk items? Because those help create room for other CIP projects to move in. Those things that happen, football fields are the prime example, or the competition field, like we didn't plan on replacing that this year, but now we know there's a problem. Now it's, you have to replace it, right? And so those types of large things don't come around that often, but smaller things certainly do come around in terms of replacing concrete stairs, because it's a big crack in it, and now it's a hazard, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we use the interest from our bonds which we would be earning towards the deficit on?
We cannot. So that can only be used for the referendum questions, so anything that fits under that. So covering an operating deficit is not, is that, thank you.
Any questions?
So this will come in June. Again, as approval. Again, it's approving a preliminary budget, which allows us to pay people on July 1st, allows us to pay invoices that come in on July 1st. We'll see it again at the annual meeting, new budget hearing, and then for formal approval in October. So a couple iterations will come with obvious changes, as we know, changed from then to now, and it'll change by tomorrow again, like ebbs and flows, but we'll certainly have more understanding of the state budget at that particular time as well, so. I hope we will.
Is there a deadline? I just have a curiosity. Is there a deadline for the state?
Yes, in state law, there's a June 30th deadline that is often adhered to, but not always. So I think, I think two or three of the last five or so have passed the June 30th deadline.
When we were at the lobbying day, they were bandying about the notion that we may not have a state budget till August, and they were saying that with some degree of confidence, so there you go.
We'll see. Excellent. If there's any more questions, we'll move on. Thanks, Mr. Crummy.
Thank you.
We will have our Better Place to Work update. Mr. Crummy, Dr. Donovan. Members of our. Oh, thank you for being here. Yeah, come on in, yeah. More than a mayor. Good evening, everybody. So I have some really wonderful people at the table with me, so I am not going to talk a whole lot. You definitely would prefer to hear from them on this subject. But I have some members of our Better Place to Work team that are just gonna kinda talk to you a little bit about their experience and the work of the team this year, so I'll pass it on and let them introduce themselves.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Angelina Cologne. I'm a 5th grade teacher at Southwood Glen Elementary and a member of the Better Place to Work team.
I'm Erin Crassimich, and I also am a member of the team. I'm a 7th grade cross-categorical teacher.
My name is Ryan, and English as a second language teacher in the district. I work at Countrydale at Southwood Glen right now, but for many years, I was also at Ben Franklin.
I'm Adam Jensen. I'm a instructor in a college over at the middle school and been a part of this team for the past year.
So since joining the Franklin School Community almost four years ago, I've experienced firsthand the level of dedication and commitment to the vision from staff, students, and families alike. My interest in volunteering to serve on this team stems from my passion to be involved in leading change within a building and the greater school community. I see it as an opportunity to collaborate with varying perspectives and efforts to advocate on behalf of others, while thinking both inside and outside the box to create the best environment for everyone to thrive. So previously, our team sifted through the data collected from the staff voice to outline where our greatest areas of concern were in order to develop a plan of action. And the initial months that we spent conversing and brainstorming ideas for calendar drafts, updates to insurance, PTO options, and a more transparent compensation structure, while they were definitely not always easy conversations to be had, they were necessary and a part of our continual process as a team to acknowledge the voices of our staff members in Franklin. Can we just keep? So we are pleased to share that our work continued this year with a review of our previous survey results circling back to staff needs in relation to new changes implemented during the 24-25 school year. So while noting that the current state of health insurance was changing, we had an opportunity to share our voice in the most important elements to maintain: choice in health systems, access to quality providers, cost effectiveness, quality of coverage, and from there, several plans were shared with all of you, the board, to help select an option that would best fit everyone's needs over a longer period of time. And for the other items on our list, our team made the decision to keep the compensation structure, PTO plans as is, while acknowledging that we will have to yearly go back and review those to make transparency and flexibility. And overall, many of these positive school ideas are on the horizon with the opening up the health clinic in the winter, more wellness partnerships being added, presentation offerings to the staff at professional development days, and a soon-to-be-created model of staff recognition, so their educators may be honored for their expertise and the service to Franklin School Community.
Russell. So again, I'm Erin, and I do teach, I have taught for many years. This is my 28th year, and the one thing I've learned over the years is that it's important that we can retain quality teachers. It takes time to understand curriculum, to understand the nuances of how activities fit together, how they connect with the standards, and then that same thing goes with staff, too. How do you collaborate with staff? How do you trust the staff and the team that you're working on? I have the honor of working on many teams from ELA, cross-categorical math, science, social studies, our people service team. And knowing that, who those people are and what we can count on and how we can trust and value each other is important. So I joined this committee because I wanna make sure that we're looking for positive strategies to not only attract strong teachers, but also retain teachers, because as they say, that's when you really build those strong partnerships. And I also noticed that in the field of special education, we've lost many people, and the pool for hiring is very small. So I wanna make sure that we can look at how we can not only attract positive and strong candidates for these positions, but then also, when they're here, how do we make them feel welcomed, part of this learning community of educators that feel supported and, you know, valued in this district? So when we've been talking about our work on the committee, we've been working on positive strategies to recognize staff, but then also, we sometimes have to have the hard conversations about things when people are upset about things, and how do we look at that and recognize it and look for positive strategies to move forward? Thank you.
I, I could say ditto, but that's not as eloquent as saying anything. I also joined the team because as an English as a second language teacher, I work with not only many different students from many different places, but I work with many different teachers and many different grade levels, and it's very hard to train people year after year after year. This is what you do with a new student. This is what you do with someone who's been here a while. This is what you do with someone who's close to exiting. So I was also worried about staff retention, and that does seem to be getting better, the turnover. When I first started here, nobody left, and that was a long time ago. And then the past few years, people were, it was like we were bleeding staff, so that's why I joined, because I wanted people to love Franklin that I love, because I've been here for so many years. I thought, why are you leaving? So I wanted to make it a better place to work, and now we're looking at staff recognition, which we found that's very personal. Some people like to be recognized, and they like their picture taken, and some people are like, just an email is fine, just a card is fine. So we're looking at that, and I think that's what we were going to discuss at our last meeting, but as the year comes to a quick close, it's very busy, so I'm not sure if we'll have that meeting this year.
Yeah, I can answer it. I think the reason why I joined initially is because I know that it's important to really enjoy what it is that you do, to enjoy your work, and when doing that, everything is so much better. And so I wanted to be at a place where I could contribute to whatever it might be that could develop that enjoyment within educators around here. You stay at places because of the people typically, and so that part wasn't as important to me as much as things like the staff recognition, and how do we get people involved, and how do we build that community within our schools?
Yeah, so this team will continue to meet year over year. We will work to, we have some new members for next year, which is great. We're always wanting to prefer new voices and expanding the team, and anybody that's willing to bring information back to their buildings and ask questions and get responses and bring those back. So we're really excited with the work that we've done, but also excited to see what we do next year. Any questions? Any other questions?
First, I'd like to acknowledge the important work that your team is doing, because I think you're building the bridges between administration and staff, you know, and then subsequently to us. I think your role will be critically important in the staff retention, and as you, educators, I think, retaining the staff, because our pool is decreasing and decreasing, and having a qualified, experienced staff is so important. So I wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart for the tremendous work you're doing. Do you guys see any specific, I know, salaries will always be, you know, one of the questions which the staff will always bring up, how are you guys building the bridge between administrator to the staff about the communications being done, so that they understand that the district and administration is doing everything possible within their boundaries to give the best they are expecting?
So I know we talked about this at our last meeting recently. With all of us coming from different buildings, it's important that we do have a common message, because if a high school shares one message, and then it's like the game of telephone, and it gets slightly changed, it can actually create more problems than try to solve them. But that transparency is really important, and we've talked about like ways to be transparent about things, even with the new health building opening up. How can we, you know, be transparent? Maybe there's, maybe buildings have their building meeting at that facility, so it's like, now we're not just talking in terms of like when you go there, like making things concrete. We talked about having a shared message that goes out, and then people do come to us to say, like, could you bring this to the team? And we had a parking lot once or twice, and I think we can, you know, that's something we can easily add to, so we can talk about the concerns that staff members have.
Thank you.
I hope you feel that the board supports all of your work, and that if you had some kind of concern, that, you know, there would be, I think what Dr. Kahn said, you know, communication transparency, because we're all in this together. So I hope you feel like we support your work, and I love the recognition piece. So I hope you feel like we support your work, and I love the recognition piece of it. I mean, if there's any, any particular piece, I just think teachers deserve recognition every day, obviously, but hopefully you're coming up with creative ways to, you know, personalize that and maybe bring in students and parents and, and people who, you know, are influenced and impacted every day by these teachers. I wish, I would have been more, when my kids were, were in school, been more tuned in to recognizing teachers, and I was very remiss, so I'm trying to make up for that now, and, you know, so thank you for all your hard work.
Well, I find it hard to believe that you, I doubt you were remiss, Mary. Highly unlikely, but yeah, recognition from the board is probably the least important thing, but, you know, Mary is great with a card, so if you ever want to include some cards signed by the board in any of your recognition efforts or anything like that, let us know, but yes, thank you all, and thanks for taking time on a busy, disgusting night to be here.
Meeting the weather, of course. It could be snow, or ice.
Boy.
I do want to thank you all for being here and for the work on the committee for the, for the year. My question, you kind of touched on it, I'm just wondering how much interaction there is between you and the members of, like staff members at your buildings? Like are people, does everybody know that you're on the committee, and how do they know that? And do you go out and seek input, or do they come to you, or is it just kind of a constant? Or is it, I'm, I'm just kind of curious how that works?
I can answer for Southwood Glen. At Southwood Glen, there's a PR code on our weekly update that the staff members can fill out a survey. We have a question for the Better Place to Work committee, and sometimes they'll find us, and they'll talk to us. We've gotten emails from certain staff members, like, can you bring this up to the Better Place to Work committee? So it's kind of more, it could be more formal or more informal, but they know who we are. And then is it monthly we share at our staff engagement meetings? We have engagement teams, and we're part of the staff engagement committee at Southwood Glen, and then we share out to the rest of the staff kind of what we talked about, and that's a nice place to share Better Place to Work updates.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you all for being here, as we said, and you can come and join us. Lovely weather, Angie. It's not snow, it's not snow. Thank you.
So glad to try.
Thank you.
And then to our employee handbook updates. You can just hang out. So yeah, we reviewed the kind of high-level changes to the employee handbook at the last meeting, so I'm happy to answer any questions that might be lingered, otherwise looking for approval from the board.
I move to adopt the employee handbook as presented and delegate the handbook to the administration for management, update and modification upon the approval of the district legislator and senior leaders with annual review of any such changes by the school board.
I second.
Actually named by Angie, seconded by Dr. Khan, sorry, Dr. Veer, Dr. Khan. Is there any discussion? Do I have any questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We will move on then. As long as you're sitting there, we can talk about teacher conduct. Yeah, so this is a newer item, or an item that hasn't necessarily been brought before the board before, but you will be seeing it on an annual basis moving forward. Essentially, each year per state statute, we provide contracts to our educators by May 15th as the deadline, so we are looking kind of an initial read from the board, and then when we come back with the board for approval, the contracts will all be submitted by our educators that intend to return. So you should see, there should be a name of returning teachers on there. Happy to answer any questions? Questions?
Makes sense to do it, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that, for our attention to that meeting. Moving on then, we will have our capital improvement plan. Mr. Daniels, Mr. Crumey.
Good evening. So we obviously covered this in the previous board meeting.
Good evening, yeah.
Trying to make this disgusting night a little bit better for you. But no, we, we shared the 10-year plan last board meeting, shared why we have it, why it's important, shared projects that we did in the last few years with the capital improvement money, and what we plan on doing in the upcoming years, and so I think we're just coming back here to answer any questions or be ready to take action.
Do you have any further questions after last meeting?
I did, we, we did, we built the teaching and learning portion, which was identified, and I did that, I added that the next day, so that would be the only change you could possibly see at this point.
It's very thorough, and as such, I move to approve the 10-year plan for capital improvement as presented.
I'll second. Motion made by Dr. Veer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. No further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that. And we'll continue with Mr. Daniels and the HVAC technician update.
So in June of 2023, we brought forth seeking approval for adding an HVAC technician. At that point, the board approved and also asked for an update, just to show the progress. So that's what we're doing tonight. We just kind of bringing it back a little bit, we had a $210,000 preventative maintenance plan in the district, which is a good plan, like that's the plan that our HR tech is doing now, right? But we knew that we could do that for far less financially if we brought that position in-house. Well, we also knew that he would be busy with those things, but if we found the right person, he would be able to do a lot more than just the HVAC, and we proved that, right? So we, excuse me, we tracked that throughout the last 18 months, because he's been with us for that long. As we expected, just in the preventative maintenance side, he saved us about $62,000, but then we were tracking the reactive side, and that saved us an additionally, additional $61,000 over the last 18 months. So if you do the math on that, that's saving us about $100,000 a year. It's covering things again, like we didn't expect him to do the reactive maintenance. We actually told our mechanical partner that we're taking the PM stuff from you guys, but we'll still lean on you for the reactive, but Ed has been able to do a lot of that anyway. But then he's also doing things like plumbing, working on the buses, and helping with some setups if they come up last minute. He helped with the cert groundbreaking, just because we needed some extra help. He's ready to jump in a plow truck, right? So he's very capable, had a lot of different skill sets that have come in handy in the workshops. So again, just to, just to cap it, you know, in the last 18, 18 months, he's proven to be costly effective. It was a very strategic decision, and it just improves the service across the district. Response time is far, far quicker than what we could get with a mechanical contractor, not that that's bad for them, but obviously having somebody on site that improves that, that timeframe, so things are getting up running a lot quicker. Plus, the intimacy that he develops with the HVAC systems and the knowledge he builds around that just makes it better for the district, so. Any questions? Again, just some information, yeah.
Do you envision, is there opportunity for yet another piece of like a similar work person to tackle other projects, or are we kind of, is this, is this encompassing everything?
I think the, the position that complements an HVAC tech is an electrician. Those two people, often we have to hire an electrician to work with an HVAC tech, right? Or if we had an electrician, a lot, they jump into a lot, a lot of HVAC. I have an HVAC degree. I learned a lot about electricity through that, right? So those two positions 100% complement each other, so I could see that being something that we would want to pursue in the future. So there's plenty of electrical work, especially in the CIP side of things, not, there's reactive stuff that wouldn't quantify it, but tackling some of the CIP projects, 100% quantifies that, so.
Congrats on a successful project.
Thank you.
Oh, with the HVAC? Well, congrats to you, you guys approved that, so.
I just appreciate that you brought that as, you know, as a suggestion, and it's certainly beneficial, so thank you for.
All right.
Put it down. Thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
Next up is our Spanish curriculum adoption. Dr. Ma.
I checked in with Amanda for Miss Pond. She said there have been no questions between last meeting and this meeting, so unless you have any questions that came up in the meantime, we can move forward with the approval.
Does anybody have any additional questions?
To approve the VOS, my daughter, VOS's digital resource for use in Spanish 1 and 3, is it 1 through 3? Or 1 through 3, starting with the implementation plan outlined below for the 25-26 school year.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Dr. Veer. Further questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the 25-26 SWSA agreement. Sure, I can read that. So in general, like this was annually, we sign the agreement with SWSA. Right now, they're taking to their board a new agreement with the fees going up, they're expecting to $3,700. I think that's about $500 over where it is currently, so they didn't have that yet for today. I think their board meeting's actually maybe also tonight. So we really want to put it out as an agenda item for the board to discuss if it's a group that we want to continue with or not. I think a number of members here tonight and outside is not a part of the team, we can give a little bit about their experience, and then in June we'll look at either deciding to continue with our agreement and partnership with SWSA or, or otherwise. I can speak personally that while I attend the meetings, I get a, about the same amount of information through my all-state WASB, Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators. We work with directly with people that are working in Madison, so I don't feel that I necessarily gain additional from the work with SWSA, just to give my perspective.
I only attended my first meeting last week. I appreciated the information as it's come via email from other members who have been on the committee previously, and just in terms of awareness of what's happening, and I know that that legislative action has been a board goal, so certainly want to continue with that, but I think just trying to find the right way to do that, we'll have to kind of decide if that SWSA is the right, the right way. I did send that email, I'm sorry it was kind of late last night, that came from SWSA that just kind of shared some of their kind of overall, what they do and how they do it, so I maybe have a chance to review that before our next meeting. Angie, you've been on the committee.
In my, my less than a year experience, it seemed to me that many of the efforts were duplicative of what WASB is doing. I mean, it's important to have many voices lobbying for the needs of school districts, and, but I didn't necessarily sense that the lobbying priorities established were specifically SW-specific, right? So I, I struggle to find the value of what having a sort of carve-out group just for the southwestern, or.
Southern Wisconsin.
Southern Wisconsin portion, the uniqueness of our needs that, that warrants it. I feel bad saying that, because it's, it's a modest entry fee, and I know that they're struggling, they lost a couple of school districts last year, and so if this were to continue, I, I do worry for the continued existence of the group, but for it to continue to, I, I don't even want to go on record, like arguing whether it should or shouldn't exist. I, I just, I struggle with the duplicative nature of what I experienced. I just want to say duplicative again.
Can you say it one more time? Is there, we interact with these other districts in other ways, right? This is not the only place where we like work together with some of these other districts. We wouldn't be breaking any relationships if we decided to.
No, I think that probably between all of us at the table, the district leader wise, have our own networks within all those school districts.
So WASB, as you've said, is doing what this group is doing by and large?
Identifying legislative lobbying priorities and employing staff to both directly lobby for and instruct districts on how best to lobby for them? Yes.
Okay.
Right?
Correct. I don't remember what I said about.
But I would encourage those of you who haven't been involved to take a look at the material and sent out, because I, I might just be easily distracted, I don't know.
Yeah, so we can, we'll bring it back in June, hopefully we'll have a firm answer from them on what their agreement is for next year, and we can make a decision at that time. And we talk about this every year, I don't recall talking about this last year, it was pretty perfunctory.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've just kind of always.
Approved it or made.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, the treasures report, it's available, more docs? Questions? No. Okay. All on the future agenda items. We have the preliminary budget action item, the SWSA agreement action item, the electrician position first read, annual academic standards adoptions first read, the Franklin Forward update, approval of teacher contracts is an action item, policies 5010, student nondiscrimination, 4010 nondiscrimination, anti-harassment, 2100 nondiscrimination on the basis of sex identification, then 6212 student promotion retention action items, coherence plan and other year reports, Staver Center update, and electrician position action item.
Did we approve Viola? And what, if so, when?
Neola.
Or Neola, sorry.
So was it your pick up or did not, Tom, or was it your pick up? Or Viola that way, yes, I thought of the. We did approve Neola, and that'll take it back July 1. So actually, that committee meeting on the 16th of June, we will go through these policies listed, and I'll note that the policies won't match exactly, we'll take the policy numbers for what will be new with Neola. So some of these policies, it'll be fully explained in the report, but some will sunset, and some policies will, like this promotion one will stay, but we'll adopt the Neola one to cover the Act 20 changes. So that'll all be clear for the 18th, it's just lucky as we switch over. But also at that date on the 6th, so to say with that, we'll have those adjustments from the first read from that committee, and then we will send those as soon as we have them in the board. So when the packet goes out on that Friday, you won't have the policies with it, but we'll send them after the meeting on the 16th or early the 17th. The other thing with that, in that meeting, we'll talk about the whole schedule for next year for adoption, so those volumes are broken down, I think it's six volumes, if I'm remembering right. We'll set the dates for when we're going to review those and start bringing them to the board and have a clear direction with that. But that'll be mostly throughout first semester next year, bringing those volumes, and then through second semester, we'll be bringing the, will be our administrative team then reviewing the administrative rules that go with the policies, that doesn't have to come through the board, but that just finalizes the package to make it effective July 1, 2026.
And Ann and Linda and I will be on that committee, and I've heard rumors, three-hour meetings, we just.
It's probably four to six, but we'll hope for.
Yeah.
Right. With breaks.
Any other questions about upcoming meetings? Yes, okay. Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Dr. Khan, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Your turn.
648.